All right, good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Downers Grove Grade School District 58 Board of Education here on Monday, February 10th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Downers Grove Civic Center. This meeting is being livestreamed for the public on the Village of Downers Grove's YouTube channel. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Member Doshi.
Here.
Member Alyssa DeCascas. Member Hannah.
Here.
Member Oldchick DeCascas. Member Weiner.
Here.
Member Hughes.
Here. Today, members of the audience will have an opportunity to provide public comment to the board later on in the agenda. The board asks anyone wishing to make a comment to please fill out a card and place it in the basket. It should be over there by the main entrance. I have allotted 30 minutes tonight for public comment and ask everyone to keep their comments to three minutes so that everyone will have an opportunity to talk. Okay, we're going to start off as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd like to welcome the students from O'Neill Middle School to help lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I'd like to welcome up from O'Neill, I'd like to welcome Principal Humphreys and Assistant Principal Bonjourno. Welcome. Good to see you guys.
Perfect. All right, good evening. Good evening, Downers Grove District 58 Board of Education, District 58 Administrators, and certainly the Downers Grove community. It's a pleasure to be here, so thank you for your evening, your time tonight for us to kind of really highlight and talk about all the wonderful things that are going on at O'Neill. There's so much to celebrate, and so I hope you'll find this presentation heartfelt and super exciting about just what's to come as we're approaching the construction and the shift from seven to eight to six to eight. So I have a number of guests with me tonight, so I'm gonna have them come up, and I want to thank them in advance. So I have students, I'm gonna have you guys come up right now. We have our Student Council President Mason Fuller, we have Chloe Rang, our Vice President, we have Marley Casper representing cross-country, Molly Maholic, girls' basketball, CJ Landy and Nate Lynn representing wrestling, Honor Lamargo for cheerleading, Andrew Howe and Gavin Wilson for boys' basketball, and Eli Adam for chess. All right. So let's see here. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I was sick going in, well, still doing that. Okay, perfect. So I just want to share, obviously, this is our second year, Danielle and I, it's our second year at O'Neill, and within this year and a half, I can't tell you how much more of an O'Neill family the staff really is and even the students. We've had some really, really tough times that staff members have been going through things personally, and it's just been incredible to see the rallied support of the staff with one another during those difficult times, but also during those times of celebration. This year, we have the unique opportunity to expand our staff, and I'm gonna say expand our staff because we have a crew of construction workers present every day, and while I have secretaries, I have to think that, you know, maybe one, if not two of them are really working in my office right alongside me. They are so incredible. So, you know, just as a side note to the board, Billy and Andrews have been incredibly responsive, supporting us to make sure that they're continuing to do all the important work that they need to do in a timely manner, but working with us to make sure that we're not, they are not disrupting our learning environment. So they have been incredible, and we've had the opportunity to have them join us for our Halloween picture, a staff breakfast, a holiday winter breakfast, and many other things. So it's just really great. As I have shared with our staff and our students, and because of our construction and with it being a new administrative team, we're really able to kind of embrace this idea of construction throughout the building in so many ways. First off, there's the physical space because we've been upgrading classrooms, the library and all of the additional spaces that we're adding to the building, but we're also working on cultivating that Senator culture, which you're gonna kind of really see apparent tonight from our students. We've also added a new athletic conference with the STEEAA and the IESA, so that's been an incredible shift for our students and staff. And then we're really digging in to that instructional work with our school improvement plan, some instructional shifts, staff PD, implementation of monthly PLCs, and we've designed our building schedule to include some common planning time. And then ultimately, we've had an addition of a staff wellness team, which has taken off, and because, of course, we've got lots of things juggling in the air, we want to make sure that our staff is staying healthy and well at all times, and so we've had staff pitch in and create different challenges and activities to keep everybody on their toes. And then lastly, we're gonna talk a little bit about that student achievement piece, which is why we are all, why we are all here tonight. So without any further ado, we're really gonna turn it over to our students to talk a little bit about what that Senator culture looks like, and to our staff team, our PBSS team with the leadership of Mrs. Bonjourno to talk about the Senator shout-outs, the things that we're doing in the building, talking about the school assemblies, the expectations, and all the different activities and things that are going on. So I'm gonna start off with our Student Council representative, so Mason and Chloe, if you want to come on up and talk a little bit about what you're doing in the building.
Hi, I'm Mason Fuller, and I'm the Student Council President of O'Neill Middle School. I am very grateful to be a Senator and have the opportunity to speak today. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. We are honored to represent the O'Neill Student Council and share important work that we do to make a difference in our school and community. O'Neill prides itself on its Senator values of being safe, respectful, and responsible, and the Student Council upholds that. The purpose of Student Council at O'Neill is to give students a voice, faster leadership skills, and encourage school spirit and community service. We believe that small acts of kindness and service have a big impact, and we work hard throughout the year to organize events that benefit our school, our peers, and the greater community. One of our main responsibilities is organizing fundraisers to support school events and charitable causes. During the winter season, we use candy gram sales to, during the holiday season, to buy gift cards for families in need, ensuring that everyone in our community could celebrate with warmth, and I'll introduce Chloe Rang.
Hello, my name is Chloe Rang. Hello, my name is Chloe Rang, and I'm the Vice President of the O'Neill Student Council. Beyond fundraising, we take pride in giving back to those around us. For Valentine's Day, we spread kindness by creating Valentines for seniors, reminding them that they are valued and loved. During the Super Bowl season, we organized a food drive to help stock local food pantries, supporting the, supporting families facing food insecurity. We also recognize the sacrifices of our troops by donating leftover Halloween candy, sending a price of home to those serving our country. Additionally, we celebrated World Be Kind Day and National Smile Day by encouraging random acts of kindness and spreading positivity throughout the school. This year, we also hosted a book drive for Bernie's Book Bank, where we collected over 2,300 books to support literacy and provide books to children in need. These initiatives are just a new, are just a few examples of how Student Council strives to make O'Neill Middle School a place where students not learn not only academic lessons, but also the importance of compassion, leadership, and service. We hope to continue building a culture of kindness and involvement, and we are grateful for the support of our teachers, administrators, and school board in making our efforts possible. Thank you again for your time and support. We look forward to continuing our work and making O'Neill Middle School a better place for all students, and I will turn it over to Marley Casper.
Hi, my name is Marley Casper, and I'm in eighth grade at O'Neill. I have done cross-country both years at O'Neill, and I have definitely enjoyed the new conference this year. There has been so much more opportunity than last year. I saw myself improving and getting involved in ways I didn't think I would. I was connecting with different kids at my school and showing leadership within my team. I love being able to see my friends from different schools and being able to compete against them. There was so much more competition and so much more opportunity this year than last. We were able to go to conference and regionals, and it was so much fun being able to go to different events and running with my friends. I really enjoyed that O'Neill extended season by setting up almost like a run club where we were able to come together and just run. There was also times when we'd come together as a team to hang out, enjoy some food. I am really thankful for the opportunity that this year's cross-country team has given me and my classmates. Thank you. I'm gonna now introduce Marley.
Hi, everyone, I'm Marley Maholic, and before I start my speech, I just want to kind of start what Mason said earlier. I am thank, sorry, I'm thankful that you guys have invited us, all these athletes here, to come speak at the board. Hi, everyone, I'm Marley Maholic, and I'm in eighth grade, and I'll give you a little information about why I liked the conference and why I joined girls' basketball for the past two years. I joined the school team because basketball is one of my passions and I like to enjoy it, and most of all, I like to be with my friends. As you may know, we changed conferences this year. Sorry. I think the competition was strong, and it brought us together as a team, and you get to see how you are as an individual player, and you get to see your teammates thrive along as well as you. Thank you for listening. I will now introduce CJ Landy and Nate Lynn for wrestling.
Hi, I'm Nate Lynn, and I'm in eighth grade. I've been wrestling for the Downers Grove Wrestling Club since the third grade, and I'm, I'm part of the O'Neill Middle School Wrestling Team, and this is the first year that I've thought of wrestling as a team sport, because up until this year, it was just me competing in tournaments. Now I have a team. It's been great having team meets for O'Neill. One of my best memories this season was not me winning, but when one of my teammates won the last match against Westview, and our whole team won the meet. This experience will prepare me for being a wrestler at Downers Grove South, and I'm so glad that O'Neill finally has a wrestling team. Thank you.
Hi, I'm CJ Landy. Wrestling has been a huge part of my life ever since I can remember. My dad coached at one point. I've been wrestling at tournaments for a couple of years now, and we've even got a mat in our basement that I use almost every day. When I heard O'Neill was starting a wrestling team, I was super excited. With the conference change, as well as the team being created, I had a pretty good shot at getting some really good matches in. I was excited to wrest when this new opportunity opened up for me. So far, the season has been going really well for us. Our team has a lot of energy, and it's always a new and exciting experience at every duel meet and practice. Our team has had some pretty close duel meets, like the one at Westview Hills, where we needed one more of our teammates to win them, to win their match, to win the entire duel. Duel mates like these have brought our team together by making us work together for a similar goal, victory. Even though wrestling is an individual sport, there's, there is still a team aspect to these duel mates. Bringing more kids into this program, like sixth graders and fifth graders, would be great, as this will fill our lineups and let us compete at higher levels. This could also benefit the team because some of the fifth graders and sixth graders are really talented athletes. These factors combined, combined with the friends I've met and the milestones I've reached is why the sport matters to me and why I like that it's been brought to O'Neill. Thank you. And now for boys' basketball.
Hello, my name is Gavin Wilson.
And my name is Andrew Howe.
We are seventh graders at O'Neill Middle School. Something we like about being in middle school is the chance to be a part of an athletic team. One thing we like about the new conference is that we get to compete against schools nearby, which is, which also means we know some people that we play against.
We just won the regional championship, which was a really cool and exciting experience that we gotta be a part of, which means we are the first O'Neill Athletic Team to win a regional championship. We can't wait for next year so we can participate in the conference tournament and the state tournament. Now, Honor.
Good evening, my name is Honor Lamargo, and I'm here to represent cheerleading. I like this conference better because we went from just one season of cheerleading for boys' basketball to cheering for boys' and girls' basketball, along with preparing, preparing for our cheer competition. We have more time to learn stunting and tumbling skills. It's a lot of fun and super exciting to see girls fall in love with the sport. We are even competing in our first competition, and yes, cheerleading is a sport. I also compete with, I also like the new conference because I get a chance to compete and play against my friends that live in the surrounding areas. Thank you for allowing me to share about my experiences at O'Neill cheerleading. I'd like to introduce Eli.
Hello, my name is Eli Adam, and I'm a part of the O'Neill chess team. On behalf of my team, I would like to thank the board, the district, Principal Humphreys, and Coach Panico for the chess team that we have at O'Neill this year. I'm grateful there's this team because it gives students another way to engage in individual and team competition. As a team, it is very exciting to be able to compete against other local schools and with the possibility of advancing to the state level with the new conference. It's been a great season so far, and I'm looking forward to more competition in the tournament that is coming up. Thank you.
Thank you.
You senators, you guys may take a seat, and I know some of you might have a practice, so if you need to run, I totally get it. Feel free to do so.
But real quickly, we do have a couple of gifts for you, so some of you are gonna leave, just.
If you're leaving right now to go to practice, come on up, otherwise, when the presentation's done, then you can get it, but we have gifts for you.
I don't know, I mean, as you can tell, there's so many great things going on with the new athletic conference, and quite frankly, each event has been super special in its own way. The cross-country team has continued on and has really grown as a family, the pasta parties, the parent involvement has been incredible. Our basketball teams have done well by being able to compete with a more aggressive group of other schools in those higher-level tournaments. Our wrestling team is just been, they had an incredible first start to their season, and I'm not kidding you when I say, like, years ago, I would be like, ooh, wrestling, but it is my favorite to attend, and it is, as the boys said, you know, like, they get so excited, and like, they're in that, like, watching their teammates on the mat, and it's like the entire team is standing up out of their seat, on the edge of the mat, cheering and rooting for their teammates. It's just incredible, and it just touches my heart. So, so many wonderful things. Cheerleading is something that I did as a coach is always super fun, and so I love the fact that the girls get an opportunity to compete in their first competition, that's next Wednesday, and they're super excited about, and they've been working so hard. All right, so we're gonna move right into talking about our cultivating our Senator culture, and I would turn it over to Mrs. Bonjourno and our PBSS team.
Yes, we are missing a few people. Influenza A and B have been going around, so.
But we're here. All right, so thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. First, I wanted to give you a little insight on one of my expectation talks that I had with the students focused on bullying and harassment. So I highlighted the importance of decision-making, and our decisions have the power to build others up, and they also have the power to tear them down. I asked the students, how many of you have heard someone say, "Middle school is tough"? "I never want to go back to middle school," or "High school will be better." A lot of hands went up. I'm sure there are some of you have probably shared that same sentiment, or you said it to someone else, but our goal at O'Neill is to shift that. Our goal is to create as many opportunities and experiences where students feel seen, valued, and excited to come to school. So we're focusing on what they should do, not just what they should not do. So you're gonna hear us talk a little bit about the data, and just here specifically, like I said, we do expectation talks quite frequently, just to make sure that kids are remembering what they're expected to do. Also, you'll notice the reflection opportunities, and that kind of comes into play when we have some students who are struggling, right? And so we have that opportunity to sit down with them, come up with a plan, to make sure that they are improving, and that's where that student accountability really comes into play. Sometimes I tap into the counselors, or the counselors take the lead on that as well. Also, celebrations, every Friday, we have a raffle. Many kids, when they're being safe, responsible, and respectful, we focus on cellphone violations, tardies, technology violations, all of those things, and as long as they are doing that and not getting those violations, they go into a raffle, they get snacks, as you know, if you have any middle schoolers or know any, they like food, so we do food. So parent partnership, of course, we can't do it without parents, and so we really make sure that we're constantly communicating, making sure that they have all the information that they need, because there will be bumps. It is middle school, but ultimately, we want to get through those bumps together, and so I really feel like that communication is key. So why do we respond? Because every student deserves to have a safe environment to learn, because students need to learn accountability, because they're going out into the real world, and we have to start that now. And lastly, parent trust. So again, making sure that we are establishing all of those things. So here's our data. This is from 2023, 2024, and then this school year, 2025, 2024 to 2025, and when I look at this, first, I was like, well, it looks like I kind of know what I'm doing a little bit more, so that one looked kind of great. But ultimately, as I shared this with the staff, it was consistency. It was high expectations, and maintaining high expectations, kids will respond, and we see that in the data, they are responding. So you see tardies, cellphones, and technology violations are going down, which is exactly what we want. Some additional things that we're doing are Senator shout-outs, and we started those last year, and of course, we're rolling that into this year as well. Students and, excuse me, students and staff have the opportunity to send those for a variety of reasons. So it goes staff to student, student to staff, student to student, and then another thing that we add at this year is parent to staff, because, right, you're entrusting us with your babies, and we want to make sure that we're doing a great job, and so it's just an opportunity for you to be able to share and say, thank you. Another thing that we add at this year is pass on the praise, and that is between staff to staff, because again, there's so many things that are happening in the building, seen and unseen, but we want to make sure that we're celebrating those as well. Another thing that we've added this year, wow, we're doing a lot. Another thing that we've added this year is positive emails home, so really just being intentional about connecting and building that parent communication. I send home parent emails anytime a student gets a Senator shout-out, just to say, you know, because typically, a middle school student, when you ask them, "How was your day?", "What did you do?", "Nothing." So this is just an opportunity for you to be able to build that connection at home as well. And then this is just some of our current numbers. We have 153 students who have given a staff member a Senator shout-out, staff who, or students who have given another student a Senator shout-out, 683, and then parents to teachers, we're at seven, and we're gonna build that up, so. And these are, sorry, these are just some examples so that you can kind of get an idea of what people are saying to each other. So this individual is always offering to help students who are struggling with homework and study hall. He is so kind and patient. Another one from a student to a teacher, "You make science so enjoyable. It wasn't my favorite subject before, and now I can't wait until fourth period." So really just being able to highlight some of those things. I know Ms. Morgan has received quite a few, and I've come, pushed into her classroom because we do them over the announcements. Sometimes I deliver them through lunch periods, or I come into the classroom and play music just to, you know, change it up a little bit, so.
I'm saying, because Danielle does it differently every time, it's really fun to see the students when she walks in, it's like, ooh, why is she here? And it just makes it fun for them. So I think although the certificate's the same, it's just a fun way to acknowledge all the good that's happening for our students and staff at our school.
I think just like the biggest thing for me is having the balance, right? As Assistant Principal, a lot of times, that's disciplinarian, but really wanting to have the balance that it's not all, when you see me, it's not all negative. Sometimes it's positive, so they never know what to expect.
All right, so a new thing that I'm super excited about that we started this year, in the past, we've had end-of-the-trimester assemblies to really celebrate all of our students' accomplishments, and this has included games, competitions, recognizing the students in clubs, and sports. And while the students have enjoyed it, only a few students can participate each time. And so our team really discussed, like, how can we get more students involved? So we came up with Funnel Palooza, and in order to motivate students, they had to meet our behavioral expectations, follow those Senator values, while also passing all of their classes. A big thing for us was equity for all students. So we made sure any student that had some sort of service plan, like a 504 or an IEP, was meeting with their case manager to make sure they were on track in either becoming eligible or staying eligible to participate. For any of our students who are struggling, their teacher conferenced with them to come up with an academic plan, so that student had a way to improve their grades and be able to participate. So not only were our academics improving, but what I really enjoyed was that students were learning real-life skills. How do I self-advocate for myself? How do I, if I have a problem in class, address that? And it really created a natural time for students and teachers to work together so that if something happened again, they could get support. So on the actual day, students got to choose from two different choice rooms. You will see here, we have a wide variety. This included a Lego room, yoga, art, and so we really tried to do a variety of things to meet the variety of interests and needs of our students. If you look here, there's just some pictures, and the really cool part is they were truly, really engaged and excited, and, you know, we didn't group them by their best friends, and at first, it was like, oh, I'm not with my friends! And once they got in there, it was great, because they were talking to new students, they were working together and problem-solving, so I really, although they were nervous about it, it was a really great opportunity for them to just be celebrated and have time to do something that they enjoyed. So we have a little quote there from a student, but they really just enjoyed the time, so it gave us a way to celebrate all of our students and their accomplishments. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so you're hearing a lot about the students and what we're doing for the culture of the building, but we're also doing a lot of work with our staff as far as our school improvement goals. So just as the district has all the buildings, we have three goals. One is for the ELA, that's the implementation of Common Lit, which has been very successful, and you'll hear a little bit more about that shortly. We've got SEL, which you kind of really kind of heard about, some of the outcomes to the work that we're doing there to work on the social-emotional pieces to support students. And then the third piece is the big ideas, using that program to help support our students with their math concepts, and then building out those Common Sumative Assessments within our grade levels in our buildings, but also district-wide, which has been really great. So in addition to our school improvement plan, the building leadership team at O'Neill sat down and really talked about, like, oh, okay, what are some of the things that we can do to really kind of target those areas that we can shore up and make changes with our student growth? And so we talked about what are some of the best practices that are things that we should all really be doing to make sure that we are getting the most bang for our buck out of our instructional minutes in the classroom, and what can we do as a building-wide, like, philosophy and mindset to make those shifts and those, that student achievement happen. And so one of the things we worked on is a building schedule, we implemented PLCs. So basically, what that means is that my seventh-grade math teachers have the same Common Plan period, second period, every day, and every day, then, that means they're able to work together to talk about planning out that next Common Assessment. What does that next lesson look like? What is the review? How did the students do? What is the homework gonna be? And really have those conversations. And then monthly, I go in and meet with them to kind of check in and see, how are things going? What are your essential questions? What do you want students to know? What do you want students to learn? How do they respond? Are they meeting those growth marks that we want them? And if not, then what are we doing to help support them? So that's that whole PLC structure that we've really been focused in on to help drive all these other pieces to happen. So then, what we can do is work on our learning objectives. So all the PLCs will then work on, okay, this is gonna be our next lesson we're gonna teach on frog dissection or the digestive system. What is it that we want our students to know in that lesson? So making sure that we have clear learning objectives that the students have in their language, their student-friendly language, so that they know what they need to be able to know, do, and understand each day in that lesson. And then ultimately, there's activities and engagement, but then having that closure to spend time, because oftentimes, we get rushed and we're going through all the fun things, and then it's like, oh, then the bell rings and it's time to end class. So really trying to be intentional about making sure that we are providing closure for students to say, okay, here's what we were supposed to take away from this lesson today, and here's what you should have been able to do. So then that way, students can reflect on their progress from that lesson. Of course, formative assessments are another key piece, so making sure that staff are providing formative assessments, ultimately working in their PLCs, to design those, to determine and use that as like a little dipstick, like, after this lesson today or tomorrow, how are they doing? Are they making growth? Are they meeting the targets of what we want? And if not, how are we going back and circling to make sure that they are understanding those skills? And then another big piece for us was really talking about the student agency. Of course, we have MAP data, we have IER data, but we also have all those classroom assessments. So are we taking that data? Of course, we're working on looking at it and interpreting it, but are the students But are the students actually taking that and looking at it themselves to say, hey, this is how I did here? And where is it that I messed up? Or here's all the skills that I'm really still struggling on. And what am I going to do to try and shore those skills up? So that next time around, I'm going to show that growth. So those are our five instructional shifts that we're trying to work on throughout the building. And of course, if we do those things, then we'll have a number of great outcomes. Our PLCs will have increased teacher collaboration, improved assessment scores and stronger colleague relationships. Our learning objectives will help students stay more focused on the learning and completing the assigned tasks. If we are providing closure, students are going to be reminded of what they were to learn and connect that new learning to prior knowledge. Of course, the formative assessments are going to have a way for students to understand that they are better understanding that skill and having that level of content mastery. And then of course, the student agency piece. And this is kind of exciting as we went through our winter data where students were able to say, hey, here's where I was in the fall and here's where I'm at in the winter and look at the growth and like the huge jumps that some of our students made. And so to hear the excitement from the staff and the students was great. So those are the instructional shifts that we're working on as a building. And of course, that all happens through our professional development with staff. So we've been working on those five different key pieces during staff trainings, which are happening during faculty meetings in the morning or some of those professional learning Monday afternoons. We have our instructional coach that also partnered with us and he's a part of our instructional leadership team and BLT. And so he created a bingo board. So now as we're looking at teachers having time or like really wanting to dabble a little bit more in each of those different things, he found different articles, videos, lessons on those different topics so that teachers could investigate those further and then apply and try those strategies on their own and then reflect on it. And so they would fill out like a little reflection form saying, hey, I tried this, this is what my results were. And then those bingo winners, we got together and had a little celebration and got their feedback. And how can we continue to like encourage more staff members to get a part of that and try different things? And then ultimately this year, we added a wellness team to really kind of talk about the promote, to talk about health and wellness and promote that healthy lifestyle. So our teachers have taken off and they've created an October step challenge, a healthy cookbook. We had a volunteer come in and teach a bar class and all different kinds of challenges. And so those are some of the activities there. So with all that being said, right, like why are we doing this? Well, we took a look at our fall data. So if you look at our fall data, in math and reading across the building, we started out with math being in the red, the lower than expected growth or unsatisfactory expected growth, which was certainly not where we wanted it to be. And we know that math has been an area that we've been trying to shore up. Hence why we made some of those instructional shifts prior to even getting this data. Because of course, the students took this test just after a couple of days of being in the building this year back in early August or late August. So we've been really working and I think as you can see from the things that we're doing with our school improvement plan and those instructional shifts, we're really starting to see that payoff. Because as you look at our winter data, we went from red in math across the building to yellow. And our reading went from yellow to green. So we're really, while it's not all blues and greens that we would love to see, we're certainly, I feel like in the making strides in the right direction to shore up those gaps. So when we're talking specifically about math, of course, I shared that we had that unsatisfactory growth, that red there. And if we look at that by grade level, our seventh and our eighth graders were there. And our eighth graders were almost at a full point below. And so when we made the shift or when we did the winner assessment, you can see us make a shift in the yellow for our eighth grade, but our seventh grade was definitely some growth there too. So we're, we're starting to make and close up that gap and figure out how we can circle back and target more of those students to make sure that we're making more growth as we move forward. But when we look at our breakdown of our subgroups from the fall math, you can see on the left hand side, almost every one of our subgroups was red. So that was a lot of work to really kind of think and target like, okay, how do we do that? So again, going back to really implementing that PLC, meeting monthly with them, talking, looking at our lessons, looking at those common formative assessments, figuring out different ways that we can improve our instruction and increase our student engagement. Hopefully we'll see those payoffs. And as we get to our winter assessment, for sure you see that we've moved a lot of those red dots to be yellow and or green. And we're making strides in the right direction there to really hopefully have no more reds as we get to the spring. And hopefully we'll be more green and maybe blue across the board. With reading, we've always been pretty strong in that area. Again, at the fall, we had our seventh grade scores were pretty good. Our eighth grade was a little bit lower than what we expected them to be. But again, with our work that we're doing in our classrooms, really shoring things up and we're seeing that payoff with our winter assessments, where both grade levels are solid green there. And if you break that down and look at each of the different subgroups, again, we went from mostly yellow with, you know, a couple of red there and a couple of green to really mostly green and just a couple of yellow and one red area to target. So that shows that obviously our students are responding. We are talking daily, weekly, monthly, and really reflecting on our practices to make sure that we are finding different ways to tap into our instruction that are going to reap greater gains for our students. So we have lots to celebrate. If you were to go through all those charts, you'd see that these are all the areas where we're bringing those growth points up higher and higher each way we go. But one of the biggest things that I think was a huge celebration for us as we built in our building schedule to have common plan time across the departments. One of the things is our building schedule to incorporate support for our ML or ELL learners. So in past years, we've always had a co-taught ELA block at seventh grade and at eighth grade, sometimes two, which are co-taught with special ed. And so I took that model and we implemented that with ML support. So now we have not only co-taught special ed classrooms, but we also are blocks. We also have co-taught ML blocks. And so that obviously has really reaped some major benefits here because we're talking about kids that are coming into the country without speaking any English and then they're diving into a novel and or some very complex texts. So I want to share or have our ML teachers come up and just share a couple of brief highlights about the work that they've been doing and why we're seeing this significant growth in this area. So we've got Mrs. Baca, we've got Mrs. Cordova and Mrs. Sines and our other teacher is unfortunately ill, so she was not able to make it here tonight. So ladies, go ahead.
Well, thank you for having us. Just a quick little background for you. We have about 30 identified EL kids in the building. Eight of those are newcomers, which means they've been in the country for three years or less. Six of them are probably about a year or less with little to no English. So we are having them in the regular seventh and eighth grade ELA classes. And Ms. Cordova and I are there to co-teach and to support them.
So I'm in the seventh grade ELA class. I have three newcomers, two Spanish speakers and then. This is her third week. We have a new student from Iran. This is her third week. The word wall that you see is our current word wall in the seventh grade classroom. So we have the English list, the Spanish list in the middle. And then I created a, it's not Farsi, it's Persian for our one student that is new. In the English or Spanish, the words that have an asterisk are the cognates. One of the bullet points says that one of the strategies is identifying cognates. Those are words that are similar in English and in Spanish. So there's an asterisk, you can see that the word is very similar, almost identical. So that's a strategy that students use when they are reading. They use from their native language to English language and they just try to make those connections. Another thing that we do, dual texts, for example, we just finished reading a novel. The students had the novel available in both languages, English and in Spanish. They heard it in English, but they were also able to read it in Spanish. Is that same thing in eighth grade? Yes.
Yeah.
And then the word wall was a little different. Ms. Baca creates the pictures, picture word wall. The technology, do you want to talk about the technology?
We are also very fortunate to have a set of earbuds available to our building. We have two sets that the students are able to wear so that while the teacher is giving their instruction, the students are able to engage because the earbuds associated with the iPad are picking up the language and translating it for them. So this is especially helpful for students when they're brand new, like our student from Iran. So that she can still be engaged in the classroom and exposed to the content that everybody else is getting, but she's also able to keep up and feel as part of the classroom. So we feel as though our job is not only to help the EL kids, we help all the kids in the class. Our Ms. Sines and Ms. Homel have really done a great job of including us in the classroom environment. But it's our job to make sure these students are feeling comfortable and being able to engage instead of just sitting there and kind of zoning out for two periods. But they're able to access the instruction.
Yes, and it makes it so much easier with two teachers in the classroom. If a child, any, any of the kids in the classroom need anything, there's always somebody available, especially for our EL learners.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And then of course, we partner with our PTA. And so I do have Mrs. Suba here, she's our PTA president. And she's been super gracious that we say, hey, we have this idea, can you help out? And so they've done, here's a number of things listed here, but certainly not comprehensive of everything. Mrs. Suba, anything else you want to add?
No, just we've had a great partnership. This is my second year in the PTA at O'Neill. And we've had a great partnership, starting off at the same time as Mrs. Bonjourno and Ms. Humphreys at the school. Sort of new together. But we have increased our membership by twice, you know, doubled it this year, which is awesome. It's a great, a lot of parent involvement, involvement, I feel like we've had. We've done some fundraisers. We kicked off the year with our traditional fundraiser of the Raise Craz, which is partnered with Kindness Month for October. And we, the students have to get pledges to do acts of kindness. So they can be all kinds of things, taking out your neighbor's trash. They could be, you know, writing a letter to a senior citizen or just any kind of thing that they want to come up with. We do have drives at the school that they can contribute to as part of the whole student body. And so that gives us money to carry through the year. We do fundraisers of restaurant nights, but to support the eighth grade dance classes. You know, some of those experiences, learning etiquette and social skills and things that are so important to the students too, as well as their eighth grade trip and their seventh grade trip. We are able to fully sponsor those and some teacher grants. We were able to sponsor some, a lot of different teacher grants that the teachers can put in what they'd like and we can serve this, service that. So we are so happy to partner with them and work together for the parents, get as many people involved as we can. And we've had a great year so far.
Thank you so much. That concludes our presentation for tonight. Oops, pressing the wrong button. So thank you so much for your time and hopefully you heard a little bit about our highlights and the great things that are going on at O'Neill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to all the students that came here today. All right, listed on tonight's agenda are four communications received by the board. Are there any additional communications a board member would like to share at this time? All right, we got two spotlights tonight. We're going to kick it off first with our winter data snapshot. Liz Airhart.
Good evening, board. No, that's okay. As we're getting set up, obviously you heard quite a bit about data and the way that we are approaching our data at the school level. So I'm going to give you the district overview of our, of our winter data snapshot.
Ms. Airhart, just, we do have it up here too, so.
Oh, perfect, okay. So tonight's objective is to provide a district level overview of that winter 2025 benchmarking data, share our response to data and future plans that we are making, and then review the ways in which these data points are discussed throughout the district. So just a reminder of the way our ECRAM formula is created. ECRAM takes all of last year's student performance data, creates an individual student composite and projects a future score for the upcoming spring. When the students take their assessments in the fall and winter, they determine whether or not students are making their growth targets based on the projections that ECRAM has set, which is when we see our greater than expected growth, expected growth, lower than expected growth or unsatisfactory growth across our grade levels. But what we do know is that we are watching and monitoring and making plans across the school year so that our overall growth, hopefully in the spring, is meeting up with what ECRAM has set as our benchmark targets. So as a reminder, we are looking at that effect size of their, of student growth. And that is what calculates each of those colors in terms of students meeting their growth. In addition to growth targets, we also look at student achievement, which is those percent of students who are meeting the benchmark at that time. And so the assessments that we look at in the winter is our early numeracy and early literacy for kindergarten and first grade and all of our winter map testing that took place right after winter break. So what do our schools do with this data? Each school holds a data review process in order to see where their students are landing within that ECRAM model and make decisions about tier one instruction, tier two and tier three intervention groups, students who need additional enrichment supports in their classroom because of the progress that they're making and adjusting their instruction based on what that data is telling us. We have a lot to celebrate when we look at this winter data. We're really pleased with progress that we're seeing. But we also recognize that there are places where we need to set action plans to address areas of continued need. One of those places was that middle school math, which Ms. Humphreys referred to within her O'Neill SIP plan. So when we take a look at our overall winter data impressions, we recognize that the results show that the district level growth is in the expected range for both math and reading. When we're reviewing those results by grade, math growth is higher than expected that for kindergarten and grade three. We're really seeing that early numeracy with our number corner in our math classrooms, really taking hold with our number sense in the younger grades. And those are continued trends at those grade levels. So really pushing at those grade levels to continue to model what the math instruction is looking like and bringing that into other classrooms as well. Math growth continues to be lower than expected in seventh grade through the ECRAM model, which we are addressing through our curriculum review process. We'll hear more about that at our curriculum workshop in a couple of weeks. When viewing results by grade, reading growth saw increases across multiple grade levels, which we were very excited about, including higher than expected growth in fifth grade. And then our eighth graders also saw an increase in their growth from fall to winter in both math and reading. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we can attribute some of those reading increases to when we get to those slides. Here is our math, our math winter growth summary across buildings. Again, this takes into account all students, grades K through eight. We see that lower than expected growth at our middle school, but we did see those numbers increase slightly from the fall. So we do know that some of the things that we've put in place are showing progress, but we do have other action steps that we are taking in order to shore those up. And then we see that higher than expected growth at PD this term. Additionally, as we go through grade levels, we look at that data as well. We do see a couple of areas with some slightly lower than expected growth, but also greater than expected growth. So we do celebrate where we see those higher than expected growth models. And we want to replicate what is happening in those grade levels across grade levels. And then we do put in our action plan for what to do when an area is lower than expected or in this case, unsatisfactory growth at the seventh grade. Again, in these models, we do see the percent of our students who are meeting benchmark, which is over 50% of our students. And we want to continue to see those numbers increasing, which we are. This is looking at those subgroups with all but one making expected growth. And then we talk about that math action plan. Ms. Humphreys touched on it a little bit when she was talking about their SIP plan. But currently we are in the process of conducting a curriculum review for the sixth through eighth grade math resource. We do find that that is an area where we're just seeing inconsistencies in the delivery of instruction. And we want to make sure we're shoring that up, whether Big Ideas is going to be that resource that we continue to use and we shore up instruction using that resource with professional development, or we're deciding if it is the appropriate step to look at bringing new vendors in and determining if a different resource is going to help us and then provide professional development in that area. We're identifying students through our data review who are in need of additional supports. And that goes both for additional supports with intervention, but also additional supports in terms of enrichment in the classroom. We want to ensure that we are hitting both sides of our MTSS model and helping all of our students reach their full potential. It's really important that we are providing a consistent intervention process for students. So again, at our curriculum workshop in a couple of weeks, we will highlight the work that our. we will highlight the work that our MTSS subcommittee has been doing to shore up those intervention practices. And then our implementation of professional learning and consistent practices across classrooms. We're fortunate to have our coaches be really involved in that process, getting into classrooms, working side by side along our teachers to ensure that they are using the resources in the way that they're intended. And then we go into our reading growth summary. Here is our building level data with expected growth across buildings, as well as our grade level data with expected growth across grade levels and that higher than expected growth at first grade. We really do attribute that to our ELA adoption of resources. So we have been implementing our new benchmark resources, our new common lit resources at sixth through eighth grade. And then our UFLI foundational skills program has really just shown such an amazing effect on our younger students and those foundational skills. We're really looking forward to the trajectory of that over the course of the next few years as the students cycle through that in grades K through two. Again, seeing expected growth in all of our subgroups for our reading data in the winter. So what are those action plans? We have been providing PLM unit previews for each unit, both in benchmark and in common lit. Those are being supported by our curriculum team as well as our instructional coaches. Our instructional coaches are assigned specific grade levels so they can really hone in on that grade level resource and be able to deliver the professional development that we are able to embed within our PLM model and not have to bring in consultants from our resource to provide that. They really are digging in, learning all of the lessons, how to build all of that within our time allotted, within our weekly instructional minutes, and then really supporting the teachers when they have questions, really being that go-to person for our teachers. We continue to review our primary data through the lens of foundational skills to determine that effectiveness of UFLI. Right now, we are just seeing remarkable results. We're really hopeful that that is something that continues and that will also have an effect on students identified for intervention at those grade levels. Again, building that consistent intervention process across buildings. We'll talk more about that at the curriculum workshop. And then determining next steps in professional learning. Right now, we are honed in on our unit previews, but there are so many other components within literacy. We've been working through our comprehensive literacy plan put out by ISB and wanting to make sure that our teachers are understanding what those effective instructional strategies are and how they can best support their students in the classroom. So what are those next steps in our data analysis and school improvement? Our building teams met by grade level just a couple of weeks ago to review winter data using ECRRA as their starting point, recognizing that classroom data is also important to look at as you're determining next steps for instruction for students. That tier one data is reviewed to see whether the data is telling us to stay the course or make any instructional adjustments overall as a grade level or as a content area team. A deeper dive into student data, including classroom assessments, adjustments to instruction, additional professional learning opportunities, or just some of the many ways that we respond to the data as we see it. We use a program called Forefront, which analyzes our classroom data and again, gives the teachers another lens to look into the student data and not just using one data point to determine next steps. Additionally, individual students continue to be identified for specific targeted support. Progress is monitored for, for those students on a regular basis. And then our winter data is where we start our eligibility determination for acceleration and gifted programming. So that process has started just this week as we've gathered all of that data together. We get teacher input, we take a look at students who we believe will be successful in those programming models, and we determine next steps for them as well. And so just a preview for our next data review. In June, we will do our spring data snapshot. As a reminder, just because that is the end of our school year, that really is just to look at our aims and map data again in that final administration of that. Not until our, our October data will we be able to look at our overall growth as well as our, our IAR data, that's a tongue twister right there. Our IAR data won't be in until October. So as you know, we have those multiple board meetings where we review the overall data for the school year. In August, our instructional leadership teams will continue to review the overall growth, including the IAR data for grades three through eight. And so we're constantly looking at data again. We want the data to inform what we're doing in our classroom. We don't see it as an end-all be-all. We want to ensure that we're being informed by that data, making true shored-up instructional decisions for our students, recognizing that each student is unique, and we want to make sure that we are providing the best that we can for them in our classrooms. Any questions? I went really fast, I apologize for that.
Normally, typically, very good job. Typically, I like to kind of close it up, but I want to start it out today because Dr. Russell and I have had some conversations and, and the board has, has had some conversations over a period of time that I, I want to start putting us into a direction as we go into our curriculum workshops and as we get later on too, as we get in October when we're comparing this to our KPIs. So when we first moved and switched over to ECRRA a couple of years ago, right? We were entering in sort of a process of working with new data. So we were sort of separating off, and it's hard to do comparisons to years past because we're sort of looking at it through a new lens. Now that we've been here a, a couple of years, we're hitting our KPI, which is fantastic. But that's really only kind of telling us one part of, of the story. So I think oftentimes from this board, and we have limited members here tonight, and, and we're missing some of our members that like to talk a lot about the data. So hopefully I can kind of cover all those topics today. But a lot of those questions could be answered if we really start looking at things from a historical perspective and look at what that looks like in, in terms of the trajectory that it's on and not just a snapshot in time. So while it was very crude in the past, we used to have these grids that worked out and we could kind of go across in an angle and say, this cohort is, is growing, it's slowing down. Something is, every time a cohort hits sixth grade or seventh grade, this seems to be happening. We kind of had that visualization of, over time, we saw that we could do that with buildings, we could do that with cohorts, we could do that with subgroups. Again, it was much more crude than maybe the data that we're looking at today. But if we look back to that four quadrant model that we had where the top right was high growth, high performance, low growth, low performance, I think what we're trying to see is the trend, are we moving from these areas up into this direction? I'm not saying we'll ever get all kids into that top right corner, but are, do we have a momentum in which we're moving? And I think the hope and, and obviously everyone will have an opportunity to speak, but the conversations that Dr. Russ and I were having is we would like to start talking about, how is that momentum going, what do our shifts look like? You heard Principal Humphreys today start to address some of that with what kind of momentum in their school. But is there a way that, and Dr. Ike Miller, at, at one point, started putting some spreadsheets together that were sort of delivered to us in the MU. They were, and we can start maybe honing some of that. Not all of it has to be in presentation form. But what can we do to see the impact, I think, that we're having on building students' grade levels? And, and some of that you spoke to today. But that momentum work, I think, is something that we would really like to see going forward. And our quick snapshots, maybe not, doesn't always have to be here unless we have some quick slides we can show. But when we get into our curriculum workshop, and then also at some point, it could be in an MU. It could be in a, a report that gets sent to the board as well, that then we can at least come in, even if you're just presenting the big ticket items at the top, that we have that background ability to sort of go in and be able to ask questions on that. Now that we have a little bit of history on ECRRA, I think that's, we're so proud that we're hitting the KPI every year, and that's a great thing. But every once in a while, you'll hear a question like, well, what about the 15%? But even within that 85%, are we stale or are we still moving? And that, that is something, I think, as a whole, that, that we still feel like we're missing. And I think now with a couple of years under our belt, we're hoping to start seeing and we're open to format ideas. Or if you have questions on more like exactly how it'd work, I, you know, we can coordinate with Dr. Russell and come up with some ideas. But that was kind of a starting perspective that I want to put out as we're stepping into the curriculum workshop. On another note, though, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of greens, a lot of blues. I think the trajectory is looking really good. And so that's why now, as you start to see some of that moving, now we're looking to kind of get into that, that, the trajectory work.
Absolutely, so similar to what I did with the IAR data, kind of looking at it from a holistic picture versus just an isolated assessment.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, I, I think taking this together and looking at our, yeah, our trend data overall, and yeah.
I got lots of old spread, oh.
I'm sure Justin can share them with me.
I would follow the, I would look across and, or follow from kindergarten till, you know, eighth grade. I think that's what you're talking about.
That is what, that's exactly what I'm talking about. And, and the formats now don't have to be like that. It can be trajectory, yeah, much more, you know. And we have a lot more data points that we're working with. The point is, I, we, we want to talk about growth, we want to talk about performance. So how is, you know, because we may want.
It's making that connection, right, to the growth and the achievement, we want to see both happening.
We talked about it with IAR, right? Like, there's a big celebration if, if we're getting a lot of ones moving into twos or twos into three. Even if they're not in that four or five group, there's a momentum there that I want to celebrate more than if, if some kids are just hanging out. They're already at five and they're hanging out there, I'm glad they're still there, I'm glad they're high performance. But to see that momentum, the difference that gets made, I think that there are hidden stories in there and having some of, having the data and then some narratives around that, I, I think would be something that, that we would want to see. That's at least the message that I've been taking in as I listen to my fellow board members of the, the last couple of years. And we've been holding out a little bit and pushing too hard because we didn't have maybe enough data in the new format. We're hoping that we're there now. And the tools that came along with ECRRA seem pretty strong. I know that in the buildings and even at the teacher and classroom level, they're using them. So how can we look at that maybe in a little bit more aggregate form?
Yep, that's great, absolutely. I will work with Dr. Miller on building some of those out. He is definitely the spreadsheet, you know, king over there. So, so we'll work on how we can get that into picture format with that data.
You know, he was just telling me, he wanted to make more spreadsheets, so.
Never saw one he didn't like, huh?
All right, all right, I'll open it up to the, the rest of the board.
Thank you for bringing that up, that, because that, I had talked to you about that before.
Yeah, it is something I've, I've pretty heard pretty consistently. One of my fellow, Steve was, was not able to make it today. He said, you know, so he was asking me what's coming up in the curriculum workshop and just continuing to want to have a better understanding of our, our data overall, so.
I just second what you said.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anything? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a second snapshot today. Jordan Schultz is going to give us a construction update.
Good evening, members of the board and district staff. Name is Jordan Schultz from Huffman Keel, and we're providing an update on the referendum projects and the construction. So we'll jump right in. First off, as always, photos. So first of Herrick, again, you've probably driven by and, and seen the progress. It continues to be exciting to see the facade getting finished up, windows getting enclosed, et cetera. It's a big deal because once you're weather tight, then you can start drywall. So you see a few pictures here of the classrooms, the big sheets of plastic hanging down, it's in the library. And those high windows there are from the, they're called clear story windows. And so those are, again, once those are installed, it's a big deal and that feels, that feels great. The shot on the upper right is, are those same windows from the exterior. And then on the, on the lower right are, is a UN event in one of the classrooms. Here are some shots from O'Neil. So similarly, again, see the curtain wall or the glass going in. Up on the upper right, you see some of the hoods in the kitchen, which is exciting. Again, a big deal. And then the lower right, that's Mason or your CMU in the locker room areas. So overall, first O'Neil and then Herrick. So interior renovations continuing, turnover is scheduled to occur after spring break. Again, being able to get to punch list early is one of our ambitions on both the middle schools as, as areas can get turned over. And so I'll talk about that further in a moment. But it's good to just see some of the interior work getting done. The door frames arrived a couple of weeks ago, which was a good, which was good because again, that holds up some of the walls until those are in place. So we're glad to see those arrive on site in spite of being about a month delayed. And then in terms of upcoming work, again, like I said, we're getting weather tight for both the additions at O'Neil as well as at Herrick. Fortunately for O'Neil, the ComEd transformer is still on track. Bi-weekly meetings are kind of keeping them in pace with our project. And so that transformer should arrive in March, and, and that's wonderful. As for Herrick, excited to see honestly, again, those interior finishes because our mind is on, you know, the August timeframe, the end of July timeframe when we're saying, okay, look, we need to wrap this up first week of August so that we can start getting furniture in and moves and all of that. And so our, our attention is really focused at this time on those, those late items and backing up the schedule to get to what has to happen in the next month, what has to happen in the next several weeks. Several highlights here, again, getting weather tight, the kitchen, getting that, those hoods installed, similar to O'Neil. And then really, like I said, working on the critical path. So on Herrick, the transformer isn't arriving in March, unfortunately. So what we're working on and are kind of pushing for is, hey, could we spend a little bit of extra money? What does that look like to coordinate a little bit more with ComEd? Rather than spending some money this next summer on overtime and just a total rush at the very end, could we use some of those dollars right now to say, hey, let's get a temporary transformer? Let's get some temporary heating and cooling so that we can push some of these areas that have been sitting there for several weeks or longer, let's push them to completion. Because the other things that we, that we can only do during the summer, we can only do in the summer when the kids aren't there. Some of the empty additions right now should get done as soon as we can, but we need heating and cooling. So we're working on that, again, getting some rough orders of magnitude. And then hopefully in the next two weeks or less, we'll get a response from ComEd. So far, it's looking positive that that could, that that could occur. And again, very, at the bottom of the screen, overall schedule, focal point is August, right? We have to really, Bullin Andrews needs to turn things over that first week of August. Right now, we're holding to about the 10th or 11th so that we have about two weeks to put furniture in place and move materials back into the areas. And so that it's ready for staff at the end of August, and of course, students by the second. Some of those other coordination, again, not just furniture, but the equipment, right? Some of the appliances, of course, the fitness equipment, and then the all-important technology. Little shout out for, yeah. Spreadsheets are keeping us on track for those delivery dates. Always, always. Back to the elementary schools, phase one, so we'll hit phase one, two, and three here. So again, obviously substantially complete, still really trying to push the commissioning to wrap up so that we can pay the subs. Right now, we're holding back funds so that they stay, keep their attention on the job and, and close things out, right? This includes testing and balancing reports, things like that. Still a few open items on the punch list. So again, there's these little windows of, okay, President's Day, I'm okay there. When can we get in there and kind of do the final walkthroughs with the architect, with Bullin Andrews, to close these items out? And a very few of them are going to be wrapped up here on President's Day. And then the remainder handful of items will be this summer when students are, are gone. Final closeout items, again, as we've been talking, still in that range of 50 to 100K for the contingency there in, in terms of savings. And then on the rebates that we've been working on from NIKOR and ComEd, again, this is sort of through a third party, those are going to land about $90,000 for the phase one. And we're already work on phase two. So the next set of schools coming up here this summer. So obviously, these were awarded already, the contracts have been let. And so all of those contractors have to then submit their submittals, right? Here's the product data for what I'm going to be installing this coming summer. Mr. Architect, Mr. Civil Engineer, et cetera, et cetera, has to approve those things. And so the team reviews them, makes sure that they're coordinated and so that they can order the materials and get it in time for the summer. So that's really the thick of the work right now on phase two schools. And then, of course, the coordination schedules, just so that we're well-prepared and not having to spend overtime dollars, right? We have a longer summer, it's going to be a push regardless, though. And then, of course, ongoing ComEd coordination, just to make sure that we're on point there. For phase three, again, this is coming into focus now. So every single, or every other week, there are design meetings. And so each week, it's a different topic, right? And, and the staff can talk about that if you have questions. But it's really making sure, hey, what does millwork look like, right? What does the HVAC system look like? What are the finishes? And making sure those things are coordinated. And as of right now, office layouts are about 95% complete. So everything's progressing really well there. Again, a little bit simpler in the. Again, a little bit simpler in the sense that these are open concept, two of them are open concept schools, have the air conditioning. There's a few things that make these a little bit easier crossing our fingers. So tonight, again, you'll see on the consent, the furniture update. Unfortunately, Jennifer couldn't be here, she was out sick. But really, again, you probably took a glance at this last week already, but the February board request is here highlighted in yellow. Bottom line is that we're able to hold the 2024 pricing for the furniture that needs to be released. And again, this is just furniture, it's not equipment, you know, not appliances, it's not fitness equipment. That will come next month, but this is, is really just the furniture listed here for the two middle schools. And then this will allow us to get these, to get this furniture in time for the school year. Overall budget snapshot then, so about 45% complete on the overall referendum work. Again, two months ago, we talked about how, how far committed are we? This is, we're at about 94% committed of project costs, which again, that's locked in cost, right? So we're off to the races with the vast majority of the, of the projects. And then overall usage of construction contingency, again, continues to burn along. Like we told you two months ago, we're very focused on this, right? It's making sure every single line item within the allowances, construction contingency are, are allowable, are prudent uses, et cetera. And really working with both the design team and the construction team to ensure that we're all aligned on these and minimizing any extras. As I said, 3B here says special attention, right? So again, we want to minimize, there's, there's allocation for overtime dollars to be spent in the summer because certain trades are on the critical path and they still won't make the schedule. And so we have to throw some money in those directions because things just come in the way of existing conditions, et cetera. But we want to head off as much of it as we can now in the pre-planning to avoid surprises. So overall, again, you see there the percents allocated, 36 OMS, 64% for Herrick. And then on the elementary school, we talked about that. Items four and five, already talked about that. So phase two contracts are released, things are in the way, you know, underway. And then phase three, that budget will be coming next month. So we'll release drawings end of this month. And then Bullion Andrews will work on their budget updates and we'll be able to then report, hey, where are we at? In comparison to what we had projected previously. Overall budget snapshot, again, just shows our, our committed's there, adding up to 94% at the bottom. Really nothing to highlight on this slide. Again, tracking invoices over the course of time. Currently 45% invoice to date. Again, this lags with actual progress obviously because, you know, there, it's invoiced in arrears. So we'll be receiving the next round of invoices on construction on the 15th, thereabouts this month. That wraps it up, any questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
What's giving you the most heartburn right now on the project?
Yeah, I mean, there's sort of the low-grade anxiety of costs always, that never leaves. But I feel like we're on the right path. I'm not overly, it's not keeping me up at this, up at night at this point. The second one, that's sort of a low-grade fever is, hey, I want to make sure that ComEd, we can get ahead of that, right? We're doing everything we can, Bullion Andrews is working great with them, a single point of contact, just hammering it. And then we're participating in those conversations. The third one would be the, again, just looking at the schedule for the end game. Guys, we have, like, you have to give us enough time. Inevitably, construction crews say, hey, you only need a day to move your stuff in. You only need two days to move your stuff in. So far, Bully is with us, they're like, we, we get it, you need two weeks. Because we do, but inevitably, we'll get to the June mark, we'll get to the July mark. And they're, they're going to try to squeeze us. And that's where we're going to keep pushing back and saying, it's your job to manage your subs to give us enough time to turn things over. Because we can't push the teachers out, right? They have to be in the classroom to get set up, all that kind of thing. And we certainly can't push the students out. So I'd say in that order are the three things I'm most thinking about.
And that, that HVAC stuff, like, just just delays.
Yeah, so the, importantly, I mean, in order to put drywall in, in order to put tile, in order to put any of these finishes in, you have to have a tempered building, right? And so if we can put temporary in, then we do, as we did last year for student comfort, but we need it for the finishes as well. So again, working with ComEd, you know the slog that it's been for the last 18 months. So you try to get around it and push them as best as we can. Come, come up with alternative solutions of, hey, let's put a temporary in, what is it going to run us for costs? And what will they allow in terms of, hey, give us something because we've been working with you, right? And they knew our dates long, long, long ago. And so the fact that they can't meet our dates says, look, work with us on some temporary provisions.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I want to commend Huffman and Keel and Bully, in particular with ComEd, just because it is so challenging to not only get ahold of someone, but then to get the time that they, you know, promised everyone. So I know that the team is working non-stop. I am in constant communication with them about ComEd as well as Kevin Bardo. And we, we really do hope soon we can come back to you and say, we have a temporary solution that will allow us to proceed. Because the last thing anybody wants is to start putting these things in and then they can be damaged through a lack of heat or a lack of cooling in the summertime. So you think about things like a gym wood floor is a great example of that, right? So we want to be very cognizant of that. But, you know, to answer your question, I didn't ask me directly, ComEd is the one that's keeping me up at night right now. But we are putting the full court press on Commendo, I thought it is, and we'll continue to do so. And, you know, our team from Huffman and Bully did have a lot of luck last year ensuring that in our phase one schools, we were able to make that contact with ComEd. I can't tell you how important it is to have that single point of contact that we have established because not everyone gets that. And so we really do appreciate that. And we're going to continue to work closely with Huffman and Keel and Bullion Andrews to either get the permanent solution or the temporary solution so we can move forward. The last thing we want are just things sitting when we can finish them right now.
Because there's no other aspect to the heat and cooling other than ComEd. ComEd is the only part of the, that's what I want, I guess I want to make sure of too. You mentioned ComEd, but then I know a lot of that stuff was the stuff that we pre-ordered early and we did all that kind of stuff. And it's a little bit different when you come up with a temporary solution as far as transformers than the temporary solution when it comes to, you know, any of that HVAC back components and, and that kind of stuff. So I just felt a little bit better.
Is this, is this something that neighboring districts that go through construction? Is this, is this like an anomaly, an outlier, or is this a standard operating procedure?
Well, I answer that two ways. Everyone who works with a public utility in the state of Illinois will feel this frustration. Whether you're a homeowner or whether you are a, a big, you know, construction project, we're still going to feel that. I think what's unique to our buildings because we didn't have the existing heating and cooling is just the amount of infrastructure that we have to put with new transformers and things like that. So that does make us unique to what some of our neighboring districts might have already had on site because they already have air conditioning in all of their schools. But this is a pretty similar experience that anyone going through the construction process is going to battle with, with ComEd. But like I said, we've got them on the phone, which is very, very important. And to make sure that we continue to just press them until we get the answers that we need to get.
Yeah, it's, it's, a lot of it has been still fallout from COVID, quite frankly, right? That ramped up these lead times that were completely ridiculous for transformers, especially like Dr. Russell was saying, right? These aren't like your off-the-shelf transformers and so it's a specialty, right? So you're looking at these lead times that are quite long to begin with. But then literally just the domino effect after COVID, we, we've just seen the timeframe shrink certainly considerably, but it's still outfall from that. It's really, it's really weird, right? I mean, again, when you order them this early and they say, oh yeah, that's only 52 weeks out. You're like, really? And then of course, back to the single point of contact, right? You're kind of bouncing around at different points, you know, it's engineer, it's, oh no, that's in ComEd engineering. Oh no, no, that's in ComEd sales. Oh no, that's in, so you're going, okay, give us a single point of contact and we just needed the, you know, bi-weekly update. Where is it at? What's next? How soon can you get it? Okay, what's the provision?
And it certainly can be challenging because of the high turnover rate at ComEd. When you make progress with one individual and all of a sudden they leave the organization, sometimes you feel like you're starting right back at, at the beginning of the line. But I will say that through our work with ComEd, especially last summer, we did have a lot of success cutting through that red tape and making sure that they prioritize schools. And in the conversations that we have with ComEd, they do tend to favor schools. That way, they understand that we have to get this up and running by August.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know this has been a, a talking point since before we started construction. It was one of our worry points. It's disappointing that we're having the conversation again now because I feel like phase one, we were nervous about it the whole time because we felt like we weren't going to be communicated with. And then all of a sudden, everything's kind of seemed to fall into, into place. So hopefully, you know, how far off are we from?
Right now, so.
Has an impact.
Yeah, O'Neal's going to come in March, crossing our fingers, knocking on wood. And then Herrick, I'd have to look at the schedule again if it was supposed, I think it was end of June right now. And we just, we really want to get it earlier than that because it doesn't give us much time. So if we can do a temporary provision in the meantime, let's get that area, those areas cooled and, and tempered so that we can actually do the, like, wood floors and dry, you know, all this stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so no, no, no schedule impact right now. The plan is, it goes in place and there's enough ti, enough time
Yeah.
to get the work done this summer. I don't remember the exact date that ComEd given us in June. But again, theoretically, on the schedule, Bully shows, hey, we've got enough time. When that thing lands, we can still finish all this stuff. It's just that none of us feel comfortable because wood floors are fussy, all their finishes are fussy. And so to think that you're going to slam that amount of work into place in two months is like, no, let's just try to avoid it at all cost, you know? Not at all cost, but right, let's put the effort in now, get the headache done now rather than waiting until summertime when everything else is trying to go into place.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So.
Well, thank you, we appreciate your time.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to reports to the board, starting with you, Dr. Russell.
Given the number of presentations today, I'm going to try and give the abridged version. But if any board member has questions, please feel free to let me know. With curriculum instruction, one of the things we want to highlight and I want to thank our music department and Liz Earhart for leadership. We had Solo Fest this weekend at Herrick and we had more than 470 different participants, which is just amazing when you think about how many kids are involved in our music program. So that was certainly a highlight of our weekend. I want to thank our staff for putting that all together. As you've heard, on February 24th, we are going to hold our curriculum workshop. At this workshop, you'll hear a review of our ELA implementation this school year. We're also going to reserve a portion of that to follow up with the board on finances for next school year and possible budget reduction. So more to come on that. In terms of finance, this is just a really quick recap. The NSLP program at our elementary schools is now in its second month. I want to thank Michelle Kovar for her leadership, our building secretaries and our building principals. It's gone very smoothly, which mid-year changes don't always go that way. But a lot of hard work behind the scenes and it is going very well. So that's just the report on that. In terms of technology, registration is already up and running for the school year. Want to thank our technology team, Megan Hewitt and everybody that works in registration. It's a big, big process when you're talking about registering approximately 5,000 students. We are strongly encouraging and pushing out communication that everybody registers by spring break. That's about a month ahead of what we normally ask. The reason we've moved this up is so we can get solid numbers, so we can start making final decisions in terms of overall staffing for next school year. Special services, I know it's hard to think about summertime, but ESY programming is already underway. Dates for the program will be May 30th through June 27th. And for any families that are listening, you know, please reach out to your building principal, special education coordinator, Jessica Stewart, if you have any questions about ESY. As Jordan shared for facilities, there will be a furniture approval a little bit later on the agenda. So if any board members have questions, please let, let us know. We also have a request next month for board approval for the 10-year life safety. That is mandatory thing that we have to do with the state of Illinois. That requires extensive work from our B and G department and then also our architects to walk through the buildings to see if there are any areas out of compliance for the 10-year life safety. So more to come on that. In terms of public relations, the Education Foundation of District 58 would like to thank everyone for coming out to the Harlem Wizards game. We had over 2,000 people in attendance on a Sunday night. Speaking of keeping me up at night, I know member Doshi works with me and we're very grateful that Downers South opened up more bleacher space because that makes me very nervous, just using the lower bleachers. So South was a great host to us. We thanked our partners from 99, but what a great night to have 2,000 people plus out from the community. Want to thank all of our admin team as well who volunteered to be there and certainly our staff members who also volunteered. On a related note, we're getting close to the spring and that means that Select 58 is now open. I know Megan Hewitt sent out information to our eighth grade families this morning. Want to encourage as many eighth graders as possible to register or, excuse me, to apply for this honor. And it really is a nice honor that we've been doing for a very long time in District 58. Just two quick others, this past Saturday, District 58, along with our partners of the Village of Downers Grove, dedicated this building and this room that we're sitting in. Board member Hughes represented our school board and gave some very nice opening remarks. There was over 300 people who came to the dedication in the open house. And so we got to give tours of all the new spaces, although I will share with the board, it's pretty tough to compete with the police department when they're giving tours of jail cells and ranges and all that fun stuff. And then they come to our suite and I said, here's our offices and cubicles. But we are very, very happy to be in our new home. It is working out extraordinarily well. And I just can't highlight the partnership that the board has with the village council to make a building like this reality. So a lot of fun on Saturday to see so many people out here. And then why I wish I didn't have to give this last report, there is heavy snow in the forecast. And as a school superintendent, I will be spending a lot of time over the next two days trying to figure out what we're going to do and how we're going to plan it. So the first thing I want to say to everyone is it's too early to make any calls. Forecasts do change, but I do want to let everyone know that what we're looking at is a very heavy snowstorm starting to take place in the afternoon on Wednesday, all the way through midnight on Thursday night. So this could actually impact two school days, Wednesday at dismissal and then certainly arrival on Thursday. So every option is being considered right now. There is a strong likelihood that we will end up canceling all after-school activities and evening events on Wednesday, just given the timing of the snow. We're also looking at a potential option of perhaps exercising an early release on Wednesday, depending on when the snow is going to fall. No final decisions have been made. We could very well likely have just a regular day of school on Wednesday with a dismissal. And then in terms of any decision about Thursday, whether we would deploy e-learning, that really depends on when the snow falls and the village's ability to clear that here to make our school safe. And then also our ability internally to make sure that all the parking lots are cleared, everything is salted and everything is safe. And it's just going to be a matter of when the snow falls, as always, we will communicate if the normal course of action changes. And I do expect several more updates throughout the day tomorrow from the National Weather Service. We'll be meeting as superintendents across the county, working with our partners from the Regional Office of Education before we make any final decisions. I know that our families appreciate as early as a notification as possible, that is what we always commit to. However, sometimes we can't predict when the snow will fall and when it won't fall and things do change. And so there is a likelihood that a decision on Thursday in particular can't be made until really early morning Thursday. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. We're obviously working on that and more to come.
All right, our junior weatherman report. I feel like you need a green screen here to show us the cold fronts coming through. I just want to take a minute to just second what you said about the event that took place here over the weekend. It was really neat, they dedicated the room. All the agencies were here. I, I did tour the police station, it is a lot cooler than your subsection. Is there turning on all the lights in the firing range? You show us all the different techniques they can use to practice. It was, it was really, it was really rather neat. So it was a fun thing to be a part of and it was exciting to see the, the level of turnout that was here, so. All right, any questions or comments for Dr. Russell? All right, then we have the monthly business and treasurer's report. Ted, ready for?
I feel like this meeting is for us, the, kind of the quiet before the next few meetings where you're going to have a variety of financing, annual renewal things coming to you. We don't have a lot today, we have one piece on the agenda for approval for capital work. But know that March, April, May will be very busy. One of the things this week and on Thursday will be the bid opening for transportation. We have with our main home to school, our partners at District 99 at Woodridge. That bid opening is set for Thursday afternoon. We hope we'll, we'll have that and see what, what those results are and then we'll be able to move forward. We will likely bring that to you for approval at the March meeting. So year-to-date report, we are now into the time of the year where expenses will continually exceed revenue. And we've, we've kind of plateaued and now we're into where we get revenue each month, of course. But it will be much less than, than the expenditures until we get to the end where we get property tax money from the yearly property tax receipts. We did receive in the year-to-date, in, in our revenue this last month in January. We did receive in the year-to-date, in our revenue this last month in January, our second installment of transportation, which we were hoping, anticipating, waiting for, so that is helpful. So the revenue on that side is up. Expend our interest income because we've pushed out investments this year as much as we could. That is up as well and done well, and that will continually grow as we keep working on our cash balance position, being able to push those investments out regardless of interest rate fluctuation. Hopefully increasing that as a revenue piece. Expenses, as, you know, overall, though, we're in, we're, we're, we have some areas that we're under. We have some areas that we're watching. Transportation, of course, is always one continually looking at and watching, and we have worked now to make sure that we've minimized and gotten moved for this, starting in January, more students onto buses that we had to use individual transportation. As our main transportation provider is able to have more bus drivers trained and being, you know, and, and that workforce is slow, has, has been able to stabilize a bit. We've been able to help move some of those things off, so we'll have continual some savings there to help control those costs. Overall, that's pretty much the year-to-date report is where we're at. One of the big things that we'll be bringing to you in March will be a bond resolution. At the FAC meeting on Friday morning, we presented the calendar, and the board has received a copy of this, a calendar and some options for the next bond issue for capital work. The district, after the passage of the referendum, had approval for $179 million. We issued the first bond within the end of that year, fiscal year. For the first three years, what we thought we would spend in that time, that's the legal limit. And we are now to the point where those funds will expire by, you know, sometime middle, end of summer. So we are now at a point of issuing the second of two bonds for that. The calendar is scheduled that we would bring to you, we would go through a pricing structure, rating calls, and then in the next few weeks, and, and a resolution to the board coming at the March meeting. One of the things that, as you saw in your tables, which may be a little hard to understand at times, but in the FAC had a conversation was, what was the options to, you know, the options to look at? Was there a restructuring and refinancing of some of the current debt? Or to just borrow this original, this, this final amount of money and place it there? On top of that, that not doing any restructuring, knowing that the board in district at any time can choose to do that if they so choose to restructure. One of the things, the laws changed last year. Dr. Russell referred to the health-life-safety work. There's a couple of changes in the law last year. One, gave back school districts the authority that are under tax cap to issue health-life-safety bonds that meet those criteria for that work without having to go to referendum for those school districts within a tax-capped area. So other school districts outside of that area, they can do that now. This allowed that, that authority. The other piece, the more important piece in our conversation with the bonds is that it allows the districts to, or local government, to issue out debt up to 30 years. So currently, it was 20, now it's 30. Some of those graphs were 20-year structure and refinancing 30-year, which is a very long time, of restructuring. The FAC looked at all of that, had some, had a conversation. We will follow up again at the next FAC in March. If the board is, you know, we can have conversations either at, if additionally at another board meeting or, or otherwise. But what their recommendation was out of last Friday was to just go with the initial amount of debt without it doing any restructuring at this time and, and having that, that structure as is. There is, that is what we'll progress with unless we hear proponents from the board otherwise, and that's kind of the, the direction we'll be having, having for that, so. I'm pointing out that Ray, a coin from Oppenheimer, is here if there's other specific questions with that, but we'll continually work on, on those things as we go the next few weeks. That's our, that's one of our big projects for the next 20, 30 days.
I just want to point out for the board, one of the goals that we had for the FAC, and Richard Ferrin will talk about this, is to make that more of a collaborative and deliberative body where we're discussing these things, we're hashing it out, we review the pros and cons of everything, and at this point, when the FAC looked at, at the bond sale, the, the recommendation from the group was, there really wasn't much of an advantage, at least in the FAC's eyes, at our eyes, about immediately going into restructuring. If we do want to restructure these bonds and refinance, there will likely be opportunities down the road where perhaps it'll be more advantageous. And then there really wasn't much of an appetite for extending the bonds to the 30-year mark, simply because what we talked about with the community was a 20-year bond sale, and that allows the district, when the bonds are up in 20 years, to go back to the community and have conversations in a similar way that District 99 would do. I do want to thank Ray for not only coming tonight, but also just for his counsel on bonds and bond sales. Ray is here at the district office several times during this process and really does a nice job of advising us, and he did a really nice job with our first bond sale as well.
And putting together all the data that the FAC reviewed.
Correct.
Thank you very much. We really, really appreciate it. Any questions or comments?
How much is the new, how much was the first bond sale for, and how much will this one be for?
First one was for, was 125. And this one will be in the $50 million range. We did issue premiums in the first. So the differential, you know, increased that amount. This, we're still working through and tweaking the final total amount. We're working as to what interest income we have, what we have from the first issuance, and then what we might get out of the second to know how much that we need to actually borrow to make, to make all of that fit into what we have available, you know, for the bond issue for the cost of the construction. So it's in that $50 million range.
And, and there's a two-year gap in between those, two-and-a-half-year gap between those two, is that right?
Yes, two and a quarter, yeah.
So does that mean that in 20 years, and then in 22 and a half years, two bonds will fall off for District 58?
Well, there's always a piece, actually, we, you know, the district has, will have these two issues. The 2022 issue and the 2025. It also has several debt service extension or DCEB bonds that are, it's, it's ability to, to issue debt without tax cap or without, without referendum, I'm sorry. And those will be coming, those, first off, we're always paying off principal along with interest each year. So there's a certain amount of principal that drops off and continually goes through. We have a structural levy and kind of a level levy, but the initial bonds, 22, will, will go, go out to 2022. I'm sorry, 20.
2040 and 2043 are the tax years where our large bonds fall off. In five years, all of our DCEB bonds fall off in 2030, and then in 2040, and that's tax year 2040, not calendar year 2040. So, you know, our fiscal year is like a year ahead, our tax bill is a year before, and if you, if you show me the grid, it's the yellow and the green. And, and I was gonna mention it in my FAC report, but there is a full slide deck in the FAC agenda from last Friday. If you want to see what the impacts of all the different models were, there were several in there. Ones where we restructured, ones where we didn't restructure, ones where we did 20-year versus 30-year, just so we could see and understand the numbers. There's not a valuable difference in the tax rate to go to 30-year to make that make a difference. Also, restructuring just did not make a lot, it was actually gonna cost a lot more for our, our tax base without giving us really the benefit of bringing down the initial, you know? Like, sometimes you could do that, and you bring down the initial sting of the shift in the tax bill that's coming up. It didn't really have that impact. So we did not see this in any way, shape, or form as being a win for our, our, our tax base. So keeping it as simple as possible and taking that $54 million and just going out and doing a straight borrow, very similar to the way that we did a couple of years ago when we did the first round of bonds and then just stacking them. In fact, and that's actually what we had promised the community, so it just seemed like the cleanest way to do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that ac- was that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to our committees. Policy committee did not meet. The legislative committee didn't technically meet, but they had the legislative breakfast on January the 31st, which was a fun time, as, as always, so I, I'll kick it off to you.
Yeah, real quick, I want to thank Member Hannis and Member Ellis for all their hard work preparing for the event. It was a very well-attended event. We're very fortunate to have legislators continually attend this event, and we had our representatives in the federal government and then also in Springfield as well. Really good conversations. I, I will be upfront why we had good conversations. Little short on the solutions from our legislators in terms of how is Illinois going to close their budget gap, and then how will that impact us in the education world? But we always view this as an opportunity to not only speak to legislators, but also to educate them on issues that schools are facing so that they can make that priority. We got really, really good feedback, as always, from this event, and what we will do is, you know, complete our normal surveys. The legislative committee will review those, and then we'll continue to make tweaks to the upcoming forums that we have. But I do want to thank all the members of the District 58 Legislative Committee, Megan Hewitt and Melissa Jervis in particular, for organizing that event. One of the things we constantly hear from legislators is that they attend these types of events all the time, but District 58 has the best-run event. It's very structured, and I think that's why, year after year, we continue to get more and more legislators attending. So overall, it was a great event. We're very grateful to our committee for putting it together, and then the behind-the-scenes work from Megan and Melissa is second to none.
I want to second Megan and Melissa's work. I mean, it really is such a huge part of making this a success. Not only did they say it on the dais, I had several of them come up to me and talk to me, exact same words, best-run thing that they do as far as working with the community. I did want to take a moment and acknowledge something, though, that was a little bit, two things that were unique about this one in particular. One, we had two brand-new legislators this time, one new state rep and one new senator. And what was interesting about speaking with the two of them is neither of them understand the financial process or bill-passing process at all at this point. And so they were very receptive to understanding the pain that we go through in the way that, that these bills and these mandates are impacting us, and, and even an understanding about being paid in arrears and what that process looks like in the proration process. But the other aspect that I think changed this year and made it a little bit more real is we are talking about actual cuts this year. And quite sincerely, when we talked to them in the past and were saying, you're putting us in a dangerous position, I don't know that they honestly and sincerely heard that. And when we were able to talk into dollars and FTEs and the impact that was having, and that that was driven by state finances, not the county, not, you know, not the village, not the, the federal government, but by the state, I think it resonated in a way that I hadn't seen before because I had several of them come up and, and start chatting with me after the event as well. So while there was no solutions, I did feel like, oh.
Right.
This was some of the most listening I've, I've ever seen as far as trying to understand and realizing rubber's hitting the road right now, and we're, we're scrambling, and I think they appreciated that. So I did want to pass that along.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off of that, one of the things that all three associations, the ISA, ISB, and IASBO are working together on is, in Vision 2030, to really push the state to adopt a more predictable funding method. And to get out of the business of doing everything a year in the rear and all of that. We've had success with Vision 2020, getting a lot of the things that we advocated for implemented, and this is a big piece of Vision 2030, trying to get a more predictable funding model and not finding things out like we did this year in August or even sometimes later than that, especially with how we get refunded or, you know, for things like our transportation claim, for things like our special education claim, those types of things. And I don't think you're gonna see overnight movement, but education is a big piece of that, and then really pushing, one of the things legislators always ask us is, instead of just telling us what's wrong, give us a solution on how to fix this moving forward, and that's exactly what Vision 2030 does. And so we're hopeful that they'll be receptive to those ideas.
Questions or comments? Thank you. The Financial Advisory Committee met on February the 7th, which was last Friday. I'm gonna be brief because we've kind of talked about it, but we go over the year-to-date report as we always do. A good conversation around that. We did have a conversation around the workshop data that we went over. We went over the slide deck in a much more abbreviated fashion than we, than we did in our workshop. And organically, we were seeing some of the same concerns we have, like this is a tough place for us to be. They, you know, I was hearing some echoes of like, are we trimming enough because we don't want to go through this again? And what is the impact that's gonna be? We had questions about, how do we truly understand how, like, how are we handling this, and then how does this work with class size? So there was several good conversations. They understand where we're at. Felt as comfortable as you can be making cuts, that we were on the trajectory that we need to be, but I, I heard some similar echoes to what you were saying, Member Doshi, regarding like, is this, how do we get on this number, and are we confident that, that this sets us up now for success so we're not revisiting next year? Obviously, there's a lot of concern that if you, if this keeps rehappening over and over again, it just creates an unstable environment. So how do you get it done right one time, kind of reset our clock? So obviously, while it was not a exciting conversation, it was one that was good for us to have, and we were seeing similar messaging to what we were seeing on the dais when we were over at O'Neill School a few weeks ago. Then we went over the bond issuance. I'm happy to take any questions about that in the room, but there was a strong consensus around keeping this simple, just doing the straight 20-year bond. And I, I recommend anyone, if you have any questions on that, first of all, you can reach out to any, you know, us on FAC, or to Kevin, or to Todd. But the, the slide decks are in there, and there's one that's marked 20-year, no restructure. That's the one that, that, that you're gonna want to look at. That's the one that we're recommending. There's not gonna be a lot, if, if there needs to be discussion, let me know. We can put that onto the workshop agenda in two weeks. If not, it will be, going forward on that bond issuance, will be on the March meeting. That concludes my report. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, Health and Wellness has not met, but SACID has, Dr. Russell?
Yeah, so right now, what we're really focusing in on is the true-up at the end of the school year. So SACID will bill us at the end of the year, and so working through some final Medicaid, you know, reimbursements and the actual number of students who attended, so that process will be ongoing through the spring. And then the board that superintendents are now a part of is going through and touring each SACID facility. So I had the opportunity to tour Southeast School at our last meeting. This upcoming meeting, we will be in Lisle, and we will be attending the program that houses students with significant medical needs and seeing how SACID is doing that. We feel very strongly as a board that we want to visit each program just to be more familiar with it, to see what SACID needs, and to see if we can find efficiencies in those programs as well. So more to come on that. We have a finance committee on Wednesday. I'm a member of the finance committee for SACID, so I'll attend that, and then I'll have another update after the next meeting.
Fantastic. Questions or comments?
Remember what our SACID enrollment is from District 58?
You know what? I'm gonna punt that one over to Jessica.
Approximately, I don't have an exact number.
35 students attending the program. One of the things, though, that number does balloon up, especially when you start to talk about occupational therapy and, and things like that, but in terms of students and programming, that number usually hovers between 30 and 40 students.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we have no discussion items tonight, so this brings us time for public comment. This is an opportunity of members of the audience to share public comment with the board, but it is not intended to be a time for members of the public to enter into a dialogue with the board. Issues raised during public comment may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff as appropriate. I have a lot of 30 minutes. I have no cards, but is there somebody here that would like to make a public comment? If you would, please step up to the podium, state your name and your attendance area.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rodrigo, and I live in the South Side, Indian Trail, and with two kids and their... and with two kids and the wall at El Sierra. So I just, more like a comment, I've been watching the board meetings and been trying to get enough information about what is happening and all of that. And something that is concerning, and I come in today just as a parent, concerning about the finances and the future of all this. And I heard one of the concernings of Member Ellis in the financing meeting workshop, some of the thoughts from Member Doshi and all of the comments that it was realizing that what is going on in our district. And what I heard is that we are willing to sacrifice some, at some point, education, the kids, the staff. But I don't hear anything like what is going to take us out of that for like the same kind of reason, like doesn't repeat again and again and again. The thing that also didn't kind of hear was like, well, what are we willing also to do? Another options and opportunities like how can we push the government? And because it's probably we're tied to not only in the district, but it seems like we're pushing the ones that are below rather than pushing the ones that are above us with more money. We hear, I hear that fundings were cut pre-pandemic, but it seems like we didn't well prepare in a, in a way for that. But how do we push the government to kind of, hey, this is the reality. The living cost is higher, inflation, families, living cost, anything that is affecting everyone in the, in the area and not only here. So as Dr. Kevin said, it's not only our district, it's other districts too. So how do we communicate with other districts? If we are on the same kind of path, so what, what are they doing? How do, what are we learning? Where are we, as everyone get together and to see like, okay, what is the solution to this? So it doesn't repeat. I don't hear stuff like that, like, like solutions other than, okay, so we're in a, in a problem that we're trying to patch and not like, you know, like looking really into the future. My last comment was also that, and I don't know if opportunities or possibilities, like we're trying to come up with money from deficits or whatever the, the district or the, from the referendum or from what we need to cover to survive the next five years. But, but opportunities like any, I don't know, it's like I hear it happen before, like administrative salaries freeze, what other ways we can increase or come up with in order to not only sacrifice the education or the system and the staff, but just looking at another opportunity, just kind of reiterate the encouragement to the board and the district administration, which, I mean, I know you're doing a great job. It's not an easy task, but it's something that as a parent probably concern me in, in, in the district that I have living.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any other questions or any other comments at this time? All right, that moves us on to the approval of the minutes. So are there any suggested revisions to the minutes as presented in the packet of materials? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the January 13th, 2025 regular meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carried to approve the minutes of the January 13th, 2025 regular meeting as presented. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 27th, 2025 special meeting as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carried to approve the minutes of the January 27th, 2025 special meeting as presented. We do have a consent agenda tonight. Are there any items that a board member would like to have considered separately? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the personnel report and financial statements, which include, include the list of bills and summary?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. We have recommendation, we have some recommendations for action tonight. The first one is with the loss of Greg Harris, we need to...
He's still alive, he's just not on the...
Yes, that's true. Greg is fine for the record.
The number of questions I've gotten about like, is he okay?
Yes, he is okay. But it was a loss of the board nevertheless. And so as the sitting vice president, I am looking for nominations for that position. So at this point, nominations are now in order for the office of vice president.
Can I?
You may.
I would like to nominate Member Doshi.
Okay, do I have any other nominations at this time? Okay, if there are no other nominations, I'm going to go ahead and close the nominations for vice president. So I am, Member Doshi has been nominated to serve as vice president of District 58 Board of Education. Melissa, will you please call roll?
Let's see, Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll teach you the secret handshake if we need. All right, so we only have one other item up, and that is the managed internet circuit contract. Is there a motion to approve the 24-month managed internet service contract with AT&amp;T for a total cost of $33,931.20?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried to approve the 24-month managed internet services contract with AT&amp;T for a total cost of $33,931.20. We have a construction consent agenda. Are there any items a board member would like to have considered separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the construction consent agenda consisting of the referendum, furniture purchase for middle school classrooms?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the construction consent agenda has been approved as presented in the packet of materials. We have a couple of announcements today. Monday, February 24th at 7:00 PM will be our special meeting and curriculum workshop. That's going to take place over at Whittier School. And then Monday, March 10th at 7:00 PM will be our next regular board meeting. That'll be right back here at the Donners Grove Civic Center. All right, at this time, the board will now meet in closed session. Is there a motion to move to closed session to discuss the selection of a person to fill a public office, including a vacancy in a public office when the public body is given power to appoint under law or ordinance? That's 5 ILCS 122C3. And the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for the purpose of the approval of the minutes by the body of minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes is mandated by Section 2.06, that's 5 ILCS 122C21.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Melissa, please call roll.
Member Weiner.
Aye.
Member Doshi.
Aye.
Member Hannis.
Aye.
Member Hughes.
Aye, the motion carried, the board will now meet in closed session after a short recess. Let's try to meet by nine o'clock.